Good evening and welcome to the Romanis -- Romanis City Council Meeting. Today is September 17, 2020. This is the public comment portion of our meeting. And I believe we have one person who has signed in to speak. And that person is Mr. Dale Thomas from the 7th District. You have three minutes, Mr. Thomas, by which to present your comments that we welcome to hear, as well as comments that are kept to the items of the agenda or city business. And you have three minutes, Mr. Thomas.
Great. Thank you very much, President Shabazz. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Wonderful. I'm actually -- there's two things I wanted to talk to you about tonight. And the first thing you've actually kind of taken care of, I'm happy to say. I'm able to see everybody who's on the Zoom call. I see Councilwoman Walsh, Councilman Adams, Councilwoman Gray, and Ms. Seho. So thank you very much. The reason I bring this up is because I've been coming to the meetings virtually as much as I can, you know, this spring through the summer now into the fall. And it's been kind of disconcerting that most of the time I can't see which of our counselors are present, and that is concerning to me. You know, I noticed, for example, my counselor is not present, which is a bit disappointing. I know things happen and, you know, people get busy, but it's nice to see that you are here to hear public comments. So thank you. I hope that you'll continue, you know, showing who's here for public comments. It certainly helps, you know, knowing that you're here to listen to us. And that's greatly appreciated. The second thing I wanted to say was I see on the agenda tonight that there's a lot with zoning. Oh, and Counselor Field is here. Good. I'm glad to see him, too. There's a lot of things with zoning tonight, and I'm happy to see that the zoning is moving towards some more flexible zoning residential. I did want to take just a moment to say that we always have the opportunity to get away from zoning, which gives more freedom both to the government, city council, and the mayor, and to the residents. We could do it incrementally, and we can use Houston as an example. The city of Houston, which is much larger than we are, has no zoning laws, and there's no codes on, you know, what the land can be used for, which allows for a lot of freedom to people. So just something to consider for the future. Oh, and I see that Counselor Oliver is here. Great. So it's really good to see that you're all here. That's very encouraging. Thank you for taking the time to come, even since I'm the only speaker. Hopefully, we can get more people involved. But thank you for all the work that you do. And yeah, I see I got 30 seconds, so that's about it. All right. Have a great evening. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. That concludes our public comment portion of our meeting. We will start with the business agenda promptly at 6:30. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you back here promptly at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Wilmington City Council. This today is September seventeenth to twenty twenty. The meeting will please come to order. We will have the opening prayer by Ms. Andrea Queen.
In humility, gratitude and great joy. We open our hearts, our eyes, our ears, our minds as we meet to serve our city with the intent on doing good work. To use our resources wisely and well to represent all members of our community fairly. To make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibilities to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. As trusted servants, we seek guidance on our deliberations and on our efforts may we act wisely and well and strive to reach our high potential.
At this time, we will recite the prayer of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the new public.
Which stands.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible. Indivisible. With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
The question called the role.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilman Turner. Councilman Turner.
Here.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Frio.
Here.
Councilman Adams.
Here.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Guy. Councilman Guy. Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
President Shabazz.
Present.
Ten present and two absent.
Committee reports. Excuse me, reading of the minutes of a previous meeting.
September third, twenty twenty, City Council met on virtual regular session on the above date at six thirty P M.
President, I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports.
September second, twenty twenty, President, Members of Council, City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Community Development and Urban Planning Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred to ordinance number twenty zero thirty eight entitled. In order to approve the removal of a portion of Anchorage Street located between Lower Oak and Lower Beach Street. From the official city map have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council put on it accordingly respectfully submitted. Those members present, Councilwoman Dixon, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilman Turner, President Shabazz, absent, Whitley, Councilwoman Gray.
Madam President, may I be recognized in the meeting?
Please, please recognize Councilwoman Gray in attendance.
So noted.
And in the minutes, I think I was in attendance at that meeting. What meeting was that? The committee meetings, minutes?
We need, Councilwoman Gray, we need the chair to move the minutes, please.
Okay. Well, I think there might be an error. She said I was absent.
It would be on the question.
Okay.
Madam Chair, are you going to move your minutes?
Yes, I'll move that the minutes be recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, a report to receive according to file on the question.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I think I was at that meeting. That committee meeting.
We will have the staff.
That Ra- Raashima's committee.
We will have the staff check the attendance and make corrections accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
September eighth, twenty twenty, President, Members of Council, City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we hear Finance and Economic Development Committee by virtual meeting to who was referred to ordinance number twenty zero forty one entitled. In order to authorize and approve a contract with the City of Wilmington and Teladoc Health Inc. for the telehealth services have given this ordinance careful study. And recommend council put on it accordingly respectfully submitted those members present, Councilman Frio, Councilman Adams, Councilwoman Gray. Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walsh and President Shabazz.
The committee report received, recorded, filed and adopted by any vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, a report received, recorded, filed on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. City Treasurers report.
September seventeen, twenty twenty, total investment three hundred and seventy-three million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-nine cents, total cash on hand. Fourteen million, nine hundred and four thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents, grand total three hundred and eighty-eight million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, billed to Jones Potter City Treasurer.
President's report received, recorded, filed, adopted by any vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, now we proper receive, recorded, filed, adopted by any vote on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
Some present or sorry, second brother.
It's been properly moved to second, accept all non-legislative business on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We had two non-legislative resolutions that was presented to recognize this Dorothy Taylor Thompson, her eightieth birthday. And recognition of the. Annual provider appreciation. And there are also resolutions of sympathy sent out to residents. I also like to make it added noted that added to the addenda results would be a resolution recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month sponsored by all members of council. With that, we will move into legislative business. Councilwoman Gray, any legislation this evening?
Now, this evening, Madam President.
Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Madam President, I move council dissolve into a committee of a whole for the purpose of holding a public hearing on ordinance twenty dash oh, oh, three, six.
Okay.
It's been moved to second, the council dissolve into a committee of the whole for the purpose of holding a public hearing. Kirk, would you please read the affidavit of publication?
State of Delaware, Newcastle County, personally appear the news journal of the news journal media group and newspaper printed, published and circulated in the state of Delaware, who being duly sworn positive and said that the advertisement of ordinance twenty oh thirty-six, which annex is a true copy has been published in said newspaper one time, once in each issue. Notary public mentally Melanie Als.
I move this affidavit publication be made a part of the record.
Second.
It's been moved to second, that affidavit of publication be made part of the record on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. I ask the clerk to read the planning commission report.
July twenty-third, twenty twenty, you're going to say who attached for city council's consideration a city planning commission resolution fifteen dash twenty, along with the related department of planning analysis. At their July twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting, the planning commission voted to recommend the following measures to.
I move this planning commission. Part of the record.
Excuse me.
Move, oh, excuse me, did I get a second on her motion?
Second.
It's been moved to second, that the planning commission report be made a part of the record on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I now ask that the planning department representative to present their report. I believe we have.
Matt should be in.
Hi, I'm just get, I'm sorry, I'm getting ready here, I think maybe, can you guys, can everyone hear me?
We can't hear you.
Great, okay, um, okay, and there I am, so I imagine you can see me as well now. So I'm going to pull up my screen first, I would just like to thank council for having me before them this evening. My name is Matthew Harris, I'm one of the city planners with the Department of Planning. I'm here tonight to speak with you regarding. Ordinance number twenty dash zero three six, which is in ordinance to rezone the parcels of land located at nineteen fourteen, nineteen twenty, two thousand and four. And two thousand and six North Market Street, fifty Ray Street, and nineteen oh one, nineteen oh three, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh seven, nineteen fifteen, nineteen twenty-five, nineteen twenty-seven and nineteen twenty-nine Hudson Street. From the current C one neighborhood shopping zoning classification to C two secondary business centers. Little bit of background on this rezoning request, Sacred Heart Housing, Inc. applied for the rezoning of the properties from C one to C two. Currently, the market street buildings are vacant and the adjacent Hudson Street properties are partially paved vacant lots. The proposal by Sacred Housing includes low to moderate income housing, senior apartments are proposed for the site. It also includes the demolition of nineteen fourteen, nineteen twenty, two thousand and four and two thousand and six North Market Street. Development of a new three-story mixed-use building with ground floor commercial storefronts along North Market Street and upper story apartments is included in the proposal. And a new four-story apartment building along Hudson Street will be constructed, including a roof deck and lounge. Just so, I know that I'm not using a visual presentation tonight, but I do want to just express where we are specifically speaking so that we're all on the same page. So as you're going up North Market Street out of downtown and you enter into the Brandywine Village neighborhood. The parcel of lands that we're really speaking about tonight is right after the new Dollar General store that is located along North Market Street. It's right in the heart of our Brandywine Village neighborhood and right as you enter Northeast Wilmington. So when we were looking at this request, we started looking at the existing zoning and I want to give a little bit of background about what that zoning classification is. So it's currently C one, which is neighborhood shopping. C one is designed to provide for sites for convenient retail and personal service establishments for a small tributary area. Residential uses are limited to two families per floor, which would not support, which would not support the proposed development. The proposed zoning, C two secondary business commercial centers. We typically find these along major corridors, they're designed for neighborhood commercial establishments. Heights are permitted up to fifteen stories in this district and the residential density will support the proposed development. C two zoning is established along North Market Street beginning at thirty-four Street, however, that is the closest C two zoning along the corridor. The surrounding zoning to this property is open space, which includes Brandywine Mills Park, which is just a passive park that is right next to the Dollar General store. There's no playground equipment, it's really just for sitting and enjoying. We also have R three one family row houses, which largely encompasses the Brandywine Village neighborhood. Some institutional uses such as schools and community centers are permitted and we do have short-lived school, which is right up the street. We have W four waterfront residential, which is really where the super fine lane condominiums are. So they allow medium to high-density residential retail and office development can take place in those districts. Also, some mixed-use buildings are permitted with a limited number of commercial uses. So whenever we look at any rezoning, we start to think about our comprehensive plan and how that rezoning request fits into our comprehensive plan. And many of you were part of our recently adopted Wilmington twenty twenty-eight, which is a comprehensive plan for our city and communities. So as part of this rezoning request, no amendments to our comprehensive plan are part of the action. C two zoning is consistent with the land use recommendation in Wilmington twenty twenty-eight. The plan calls for neighborhood mixed use, which C two supports. And this rezoning also supports several objectives of the prices run Riverside, eleven Street Bridge and Bainer Boulevard sections of Wilmington twenty twenty-eight. And I'd like to share those with you. Those are to prevent nuisance properties and stabilize vacant properties, make neighborhood commercial corridors and centers clean, safe and attractive. Enhance the attractiveness of city gateways and enhance Concord Avenue and North Market Street as attractive gateway corridors. Another moving piece of this rezoning request is the Brandywine Village National Register Historic District. The area was added to the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen seventy-one. This is different than a city historic district. Greater Brandywine Village also has an urban renewal plan, which was adopted in two thousand and one. C one zoning, the current zoning limits the scale of development to remain in character with historic district. Heights of buildings are limited to three stories. The C two zoning permits heights up to fifteen stories, which would be out of character with the historic district. So then we kind of put all these pieces together in our analysis. So both the C one and both the current C one zoning and the proposed C two zoning are consistent with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan. The existing C one zoning does not support the proposed development, however, the proposed C two zoning does support the development. Neighborhood mixed use is appropriate along major corridors. And while those C two zoning is in the immediate area, there is C two zoning beginning at thirty-four Street on North Market Street. Also, no non-conforming uses will be created. And however, the rezoning does permit a level of density and heights up to fifteen stories that would be out of character with the Brandywine Village National Register Historic District. In addition, C two permits in some cases unlimited hours of operation for some commercial businesses. So the planning commission reviewed this rezoning request on August eighteenth of twenty twenty. And they voted to approve the rezoning of the stated parcels from the current C one neighborhood shopping to C two secondary business commercial centers. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Are there any questions for members of council? Seeing none. Are there, are there anyone from the public who wish to speak for this planning report? Or do I see a hand? Hold on. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Council President, I have a question for Matthew. Matthew, did you say that in this plan it is going to include residential properties?
Um, it's, the proposal is to create senior apartments, however, no residences are coming down as part of the plan. Like nothing residential is being taken down.
Oh, okay, the reason why I asked because I wanted to find out if it would be affordable housing. housing. I know that is one concern that the community has right now, is where, is affordable housing and is more affordable housing going to be developed? So that's why I asked that question.
Yes, and the answer to that question is yes, and this actually, this project will complement another project that Sacred Heart Housing, which many other people know, it's synonymous with the Ministry of Caring, completed, which is the Village of St. John, which was the adaptive reuse of the Episcopal Church of St. John at Concord and North Market Street for affordable senior housing as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I see no other hands from members of council. I will, I, I not ask for the public if there's anyone to speak.
Council President. I'm sorry, I can't get my hand to go up.
Okay.
I just like to make a comment on this project.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. I think this is a really exciting project. This type of development and these rezoning changes have been talked about for the last thirty five years for that neighborhood. We, we've already seen the St. John's project completed down there. This is another one that's coming down. When this all gets together, along with the river enhancements, it's truly going to be a river-to-river city. Once again, the fact that the Brandywine has so many people and organizations interested in cleaning it up, that they're hoping within the next twenty years, the fish you actually catch down there, and there's going to be some great fish down there, uh, within the next five years, are all going to be edible. It's going to be a very exciting place to live in this city. I just see the property values going up and up and up, once everything gets in place, and I wish the very best to those who are going to be investing in this whole area. And congratulations to Councilmember Oliver for being part of this. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you. I just want to know, is this rezoning going to hinder or help the development for further down Market Street? Because I had asked that, the next time they go to the state for money, that they look at further north down Market Street. So will this rezoning hinder or will it help that request?
Um, well, and when you say up further north of North Market Street, can you maybe name a cross street?
Twenty six, twenty seven.
Twenty six, twenty seven, yeah.
I mean, going out to thirty fifth, thirty sixth, but just carrying it further north.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that this specific zoning request is going to impact development on those blocks, you know? It's going to be an infusion of a, of some economic development in that community and along the corridor. So whether or not that has reciprocal effects, you know, but no, the rezoning itself will not impact development further up Market Street.
Thank you.
I see no other comments from members of council. I, I would like to say some comments before I go to the public in support of, wait a minute, there is another hand, okay. In support of this project, we saw, as you know, Ministry of Caring does amazing developments for our vulnerable senior population, and this is going to make such a beautiful place for our seniors to be able to live right along the river, and also to provide the necessary complimentary goods and services that a growing neighborhood needs. And so I am so much, much looking forward to its success, and it probably will starting a rolling effect, Councilwoman Gray, for further development continuing down Market Street. So this is a good place to start in developing Market Street, and I, I look forward to it's coming about in the great speed and standard that the Ministry of Caring is known for. With that, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. I want to disagree with the planner in the sense that moving from C one to C two is actually a loosening of the zoning restrictions, and with the loosening of zoning resist, uh, restrictions, you allow for more development, more investment, more of everything. Actually, it's the increase in zoning restrictions that raises the cost of the property, and that is so true with affordable housing, okay? Most people, we can't build affordable housing in the city because of zoning restrictions. I mean, in a, in a year of progressiveness, I would think we'd be doing away with zoning, but hey, I guess things are really held on to for a very long period of time. But here's a situation where we're trying to develop the north side of Market Street across from the river, and I could not imagine a better project than knows what this is. If you want to see what this project's going to look like, go across the river on Market Street and visit St. John's Village. This one is going up right across the street. I was going to say my comments for the public portion of this ordinance, and I certainly will comment at that time, but the planner needs to understand that the less restrictive zoning allows more investment, more uses of property, and lowers the cost of property. That's been proven time and time again, why we hold on to restrictive zoning is just beyond me. It's, as a matter of fact, it's discriminative when it comes right down to it. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other hands of, from the members of council and/or the public in reference for this project. Are there any comments, anyone wants to speak against the project? Someone had their hand up in the public, but they put it back down. Okay, Bobby Britton. Bobby Britton. From the public.
Yes, sorry, I had myself muted. I know this, this project has been the discussion of.
Are you speaking, you speaking for or against the project?
Absolutely for.
Okay, very good.
I got confused as to whether I was supposed to have my hand up or not. Um, I know this project has been the discussion at numerous boards and meetings. I anticipated that, that there were going to be a lot of people here speaking for, but at every single meeting, this is something that every group has supported. We have all sent letters of support for the application package. I mean, this really is going to be catalytic in that section of Market Street to really start to make an impact on the vacant property that, that keeps energy from happening. So, yeah, on behalf of the entire community that has spoken to this in our own meetings, I'd like to make sure the council understands the level of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Pitas. Pitas, sorry.
It's Pitas.
Pitas, okay. Sorry for mispronouncing your name, sir.
No problem.
You're speaking.
My name is John Pitas. I think I've met a number of people on the council before. I'm president of Second District MPC, also president of Brandywine Village Civic Association, and also Greater Brandywine Village Revitalization. I also am a longtime resident Brandywine Village. My family, I bought into this neighborhood back in nineteen sixty-two, and I was in the first, uh, third grade class at Shortledge Elementary, so I know this neighborhood very, very well, for a very long time, and I just want to add my comments in favor of this project. It's long overdue. That area of Market Street, which used to be a lot of small shops back in a long time ago, has unfortunately gone downhill, as probably many of you know, in the past thirty years, and it's good, and there's a number of empty storefronts there, so it's good to see this project coming into that area, basically at the intersection of Market Street and Twentieth Street there, and I'm all, all three organizations are all for and support this project.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
See no other individuals to make comments for or against this. I ask the council member to move to return back, to make a motion to return back to the regular order of business.
Okay, I move, I know, I think this was in Councilwoman Dixon's committee, but if she doesn't move it, I move, I move this.
To move back to the regular order of business, come out of committee of the whole.
Okay, I move, that just comes back to the regular committee of business.
Is it, we got a second? It's been moved to second that council return to the regular order of business. Madam Clerk, will you please read the committee report?
September second, twenty twenty, President, Members of Council, City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we your Community Development Urban Planning Committee by virtual meeting to whom was referred ordinance number twenty zero thirty six entitled. In ordinance to rezone the parcels of land located at one nineteen fourteen, nineteen twenty, twenty oh four, and twenty oh six North Market Street, and two fifty Race Street, and three nineteen oh one, nineteen oh three, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh seven, nineteen fifteen, nineteen twenty five, nineteen twenty seven, and nineteen twenty nine Hudson Street from C one neighborhood shopping zoning classification to C two second business center zoning classification. I've given this ordinance careful step and recommend council on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Dixon, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Turner, President Shabat, accent with leave, Councilwoman Gray.
Councilwoman Oliver, remove the report, please.
Sure. I move this committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been, the report has been received, recorded, filed, adopted by any, any motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Clerk, are there any findings from the report?
Yes. To the Honorable Anifa Shabat, President of Council, the honorable members of council from Elizabeth D. Powers, Senior Assistant City Solicitor, date September sixteen, twenty twenty, enclosed, please find a copy of the findings prepared in connection with council's scheduled.
Be a part of the record.
Second.
It's been moved to second that the findings be part of the record. It's moved to say findings be made part of the record. Are the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Madam President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty zero thirty six, in order to rezone the parcels of land located at one nineteen fourteen, nineteen twenty, twenty oh four, and twenty oh six North Market Street, and two fifty Race Street, and three nineteen oh one, nineteen oh three, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh seven, nineteen fifteen, nineteen twenty five, nineteen twenty seven, and nineteen twenty nine Hudson Street.
Being on acting clause, it's a call for yea and nay vote.
Use secondary business centers zoning classification. Okay, third reading of the ordinance.
Councilmember, you have moved.
No. You did third reading, I'm sorry.
Yes. Finalizing the reading.
Okay.
It's been properly moved.
Yeah, I move this being known as in acting clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been moved to the second and definitely call for the third reading of the ordinance to call for a nay and nay vote. Can you call for the vote? It's been properly moved to second, that we know as in acting clause of the ordinance and call for yea and nay vote.
You don't have a question, madam?
No question. Questions. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, ma'am. I, I must admit, I could not be more excited about an ordinance than this one right here, because it extends the central business district north on Market Street for at least five more blocks. It actually crosses the river for the longest time. That seemed to be a barrier there that we couldn't jump across. I know we have a Dollar General there in Superfine, but once you get past that, hey, guy, situation really need some help. Reason why I, I really like this ordinance is like I sort of hinted to previously, is that we're loosening up the zoning restrictions in this area. We're allowing business to come in. We're also putting senior citizens' housing in here, which is affordable housing for senior citizens. You could not have a better combination than this village here that's going to be built by Sacred Heart and Ministry of Caring. I, I mean, if you want to see the quality of their work, like I said, St. John Village is going to be, is already right across the street from this. Please take the time to visit that so you can see what this one's going to look like, and to have commercial space in the bottom of that where people can just simply walk across the street, or walk downstairs, or now you can actually walk north on Market across the river and actually have a small business and beautiful section of town. Wow. Gee, this is a big step forward for the city of Wilmington. You know, this goes right along with everything else we're trying to do and advance the city, and I think everybody should be jumping up and down about this one. Thank you, and, excuse me, before, before I close, I want to extend the greatest appreciation to Ministry of Caring and those people at Sacred Heart Village that are putting this together to make this happen for the city of Wilmington. Thank you, Ministry of Caring.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I want to echo the same sentiments as Councilmember Adams, as well as Councilmember Walsh, as relates to this being an awesome opportunity for that particular area of the city. I think it's been a long time coming as it relates to more development being done in different areas of the city. There's always conversations about when we're going to move development around in other parts of the city versus downtown, and of course, the river friends, so I'm happy for that reason, and the fact that it's mixed use, and that there's an opportunity to bring, and, well, it's going to be creating more economic development, hopefully, local jobs and local hiring, and, and it's consistent with the Wilmington Com Plan, the Wilmington twenty twenty eight Com Plan, so I think it's awesome, and I'm excited about it, and if I may, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very quickly, the Ministry of Caring has a saying that they have on a lot of their printed materials, and it basically says, never treat the poor poorly. If anyone bothers to go visit the facilities that they have for housing in this town, Sacred Heart One over in the Trinity vicinity, Trinity was falling down very quickly. Homes had been reduced fifty to sixty thousand dollars over there. They put up this structure of Sacred Heart One, and people become protective of the seniors living there. The crime has fallen remarkably. Now, a block and a half away, the crime is high, but the blocks from where Sacred Heart One is on over to the rest of Trinity, the crime is very, very low. On the east side, Sacred Heart Two, it's the same story, a high crime area prior, facilities there, and things are dropping all the time. St. John's, that whole corner of Market Street was just a mess from like twenty first and twenty second on down. Things have stabilized so much over there. Properties that again had fallen down quite a bit are now coming up quite quickly. They're just terrific neighbors. They run terrific facilities, and when I finally get this up, that might be one of the places I try to live in, but I guess with my pension and social security, I make too much money. But they truly do live up to their saying of never treat the poor poorly, because anybody who has a parent or a relative living in one of their facilities puts their head down on their pillow every night knowing they're safe. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Right, and if I may add, that once they're finished with one project, there's another one on the drawing board, so I love the fact that their tenacity to continue to address the needs of the poor in the age and the underserved is a continuous initiative on their behalf, and. The Ministry of Caring does a fabulous job and they and they should be acknowledged, and I definitely supported this legislation. I see no other members, uh no other comments for members of council, and I see none from the any members of the public. And again, coming back to council for the second round for comments, seeing none. Uh I ask that the clerk will call the roll and upon your vote, please um. I should state the reason for your vote. And with that, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, I definitely support this, I'm very familiar with the work of um. Of this ministry, so I'm definitely in support, and I do think it will help move um redevelopment down Market Street. Thank you.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, um I do find um the support for the community. Um I like to say the neighborhood planning council, um the blueprint, the civic associations in that area. Um were very supportive um of this findings of the support. Um I like to thank brother, also brother Ron and Priscilla and the whole Ministry of Caring um organization. Um the village of Saint John's, uh I have to reiterate uh with the affordable housing. I used to work over there and um the drugstore that Mr. Patel used to own. So with all the findings, um it's more than enough support, I'm excited to um have them as good brother Ron Ministry of Caring. Have them as good neighbors with the O B V. Um it's been a lot of work put into this project for uh ever since I've been on council, they've been talking about that area. And I'm excited to see the growth in that neighborhood, and Matt, you've done a great job, and yes. Due to the finding and the support, I do support this project.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley?
Uh yes, um I support um my guests basically due to all the positive findings. But um the ones that stick out to me um after going over the findings are the fact that. One, um the affordable housing, because there's a great need for that. Two, um it's opening up economic development and possibly more jobs. Three, um the mixed neighborhood use, I think that is good for any um particular community and corridor corridor. And it's basically on the main corridor, and I think that is definitely going to be an upgrade and a major improvement in that area, and I'm really excited about it, thank you.
Councilman Turner? Councilman Turner?
Yes, in regards of the respondents, the founders.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes, uh due to the findings and recommendations.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, due to the findings and recommendations. Um again, just to reiterate what everyone else says, I I think this is uh looking forward to the twenty twenty eight plan. I'm glad, overjoyed, there's uh finally projects like this are are getting put in motion. A great job, Councilwoman Oliver.
Councilman Frio?
Yes, based on the planning department's findings.
Councilman Adams?
Uh yes, ma'am clerk, I I would like be added as a sponsor to this ordinance, and um I'm voting yes for it for every reason. Uh like uh everyone has said, it's a wonderful project, and again, I'd like to say thank you for the Ministry of Caring for uh taking on the risk. Again, the responsibility of putting this together on North Market Street, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Um yes, I support the findings, the community support toward this project, Ministry of Caring and the growth of a corridor uh up for upper. Market Street, which we've been talking about also, again, as my colleague has said, since we started on council, so I'm looking forward to the development in the area, thank you.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes, I support the flight needs of the planning commission.
President Shabazz?
Yes, based on the findings and the community support.
Eleven yeas and one absent.
declared adopted. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley?
That will be all, Madam President, thank you.
Yes, Council. Yes, Council President, I have an ordinance to present a call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty zero forty four, agenda forty eight fifty seven, in order to rezone sixteen parcels of land located within the area generally bounded by Madison and Justin. Justice and Streets, the Amtrak Railroad Quarter I ninety five and the city's southern boundaries from W two waterfront manufacturing, commercial zoning classification. To W four waterfront residential, commercial zoning classification.
First reading of the or or the ordinance?
In order to rezone sixteen parcels of land located within this the area generally bounded by Madison and Justice and Streets to Amtrak Railroad Quarter I ninety five. And the city's southern boundary from W two waterfront manufacturing, commercial zoning classifications to W four waterfront residential and commercial zoning classification.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Council President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that be known as the first and second read of the ordinance referred to the Community Development Urban Planning Committee.
Council President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty zero fifty four, agenda forty eight fifty eight. Whereas contemporaneous with this resolution, an ordinance will be introduced to the Wilmington City Council that will propose amendments to the city's official building zone map. Relating to changing the zoning classification of sixteen parcels of land located within the area generally bounded by Madison and Justice's Street. The Amtrak Railroad Quarter I ninety five and the city's southern boundary.
Hey, let's see.
Do you want to move the legislation, Councilwoman?
Oh yes, I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and a vote.
Watch it again.
It's been properly moved to second, resolution to receive, record, file and adopted by any vote or the question?
Uh yes, Council President, um uh this particular uh resolution, I am, my screen froze on me, I apologize. That's why I'm trying to find my place here. Um. Give me one minute here. Hold on. Okay, um so this resolution um schedules a public hearing on November the nineteenth at six thirty P M. Regarding the provoke proposed rezoning of sixteen parcels of land located within the area generally bounded by Madison and Justice and Streets. Um and the Amtrak Railroad Quarter I ninety five and the city's southern boundary. And I just want to mention that um. Due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus, uh this public hearing will be conducted um virtually. Um to maintain social distancing and to keep all constituents safe. The instructions to access the public hearing will be included on the agenda for the November nineteenth um council meeting. Thank you.
Seeing that there's no comments for members of council, are there any comments from the public? They see no comments from the members of the public and no further comments from the from the members of council, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Frio?
Yes.
Councilman Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh? Councilwoman Walsh?
You don't, I think it must be.
Yes.
Thank you. President Shabazz?
Yes.
Eleven yeas and one absent.
Declared adopted.
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, legislation tonight?
Nothing like, nothing like, Madam President.
Councilmember McCoy, legislation tonight?
Yes, Madam President, uh I move council dissolve into a committee of the whole for the purpose of holding a public hearing on ordinance two zero dash zero three seven.
Second.
It's been moved to second that council dissolve dissolve into a committee of the whole for the purpose of holding a public hearing. Um all those are favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Uh clerk, will you please read the affidavit of publication?
State of Delaware, Newcastle County, person who appear the news journal of the news journal, newspaper printed, published and circulated, state of Delaware, who being duly sworn deposit, said advertisement of ordinance twenty oh thirty seven, of which the annex is a true copy, has been published in the said newspaper one time, once in each issue. Um signed by Melanie Alt, Notary Public.
I move the affidavit of the publication be made part of the record.
Second. It's removed to second that the affidavit publication be made part of the record. All those are favor signified by saying that um aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. I didn't answer all the question, I'm sorry, was there any any other question? All those are favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Clerk, please read the planning commission report.
April twenty fourth, twenty twenty, dear Masego, attached for city's councils consideration as city planning commission resolution zero nine two zero. And resolution ten dash twenty, along with the related Department of Planning analysis. At the April twenty first, twenty twenty meeting, the planning commission voted to recommend the following measures to city council.
I move that the planning commission report be made part of the record.
Second.
It's been moved to second that the planning commission report be made part of the record or the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. With any representative, um present your report.
Um good evening again, um thank you again, this is this is Matt Harris with the Department of Planning, and I'm also here for this ordinance as well. So, oh, um one second, I'm just pulling up my screen. Okay. Alright, um so I'm here to discuss with everyone ordinance twenty dash zero three seven, which is an ordinance to rezone the parcels of land located at seven hundred Maryland Avenue. One oh one Lower Oak Street, one twenty Lower Beach Street from M two general industrial zoning classification to C two secondary business commercial centers. Little bit of background on this rezoning request, um the Raybold Venture Group applied for the rezoning of the N V F factory and two adjacent properties from M two to C two. Um the factory is vacant and the two adjacent lots are partially paved vacant lots. Regal purchased the par- factory in two thousand and six and the adjacent lots in March of twenty eighteen. The proposal includes market rate apartments um for the site. The adaptive reuse of the factory and a new construction apartment along Maryland Avenue and Beach Street. Open space on the potentially vacant Anchorage Street and parking on the vacant lots located to the east of Anchorage Street. Um so, again, so we all um are speaking um and understanding exactly what we're discussing here. The N V F factory is located directly, pretty much right next to the Browntown community. Um right along Lower Oak Street, um where Beach Street kind of cuts into the riverfront. Um there was a demolition of some some of the buildings in recent time along Maryland Avenue there. Um but that is the site that we are discussing this evening. So the. Um so the existing zoning is M two general industrial. Um M two permits large scale industries with little restriction. Um heights are limited to four stories and no residential uses are permitted in M two districts. Um you can see how this is largely reflected in um the existing infrastructure and the buildings that are there um with it being a factory. The proposed C two secondary business centers, um these are typically located along major highways. They're designed to prevent neighborhood commercial establishments, heights are limited to fifteen stories and residential uses are permitted. The surrounding zoning includes C two secondary business commercial centers, um again, located along major corridors, which we would in the Department of Planning consider Maryland Avenue to be one. Um they're designed for mid neighborhood commercial establishments. We also have our three one family row houses, which largely encompasses our Browntown and Hedgeville neighborhoods. Um again, with some institutional uses such as schools and community centers. Um we also have some M two um general industrial, large scale industries with little restriction, and the heights are limited to four stories. That is what is known as the dark, the dark facility, which is right next to the N V F factory. Again, um looking at our comprehensive plan, um no amendments to our comprehensive plan are part of this rezoning action this evening. M two zoning is um inconsistent with the land use recommendation in Wilmington twenty twenty eight. The plan calls for neighborhood mixed use, which C two supports. This rezoning also supports several other objectives of the Browntown Hedgeville section of Wilmington twenty twenty eight, um which I'm going to share with you. Which include preventing nuisance properties and stabilizing vacant properties. Making neighborhood commercial corridors and centers clean, safe and attractive, and enhancing the attractiveness of city gateways. Um and clearly, Maryland Avenue would be one of those gateways. So the rezoning um implements one of the future land use recommendations in our new comprehensive plan, which identifies this parcel with parcel for mixed use instead of the current industrial use. The rezoning will support the proposed development for the site. Neighborhood mixed use is appropriate along major corridors. The rezoning logically expands the existing C two zoning along Maryland Avenue. And no nonconforming uses will be created. Um the rezoning also supports the objectives that I just stated that are part of the Browntown Hedgeville um section of our comprehensive plan. So on July twenty first of twenty twenty, City Planning Commission voted to approve the rezoning of the three parcels. Um generally bounded by Maryland Avenue, Lower Oak Street, Beach Street and the rail via that from M two general industrial to C two secondary business commercial centers. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Matt, I have a question, was there, um does this partial require any environmental um environmental cleanup?
It does um require some environmental cleanup, and that was a that was a big um discussion in the committee hearing. Um and the property owner is working with Denrec to work through that entire process. It's part of the Brownfields process and Denrec is working closely with them with the developer.
Are there any other questions for members of council? See none. Is there anyone from the public, oh, I finally see it, Michelle Harley? I gotta do this a little quicker.
Oh, no, it's my phone, I'm sorry, everything is delayed, but thank you. Uh so, Matt, it sounds like um this uh. Resolution and piece of legislation is very similar to the one that we voted on for Sacred Heart. Um in terms of rezoning and and so um do we have any idea as to what um development is going to take place? Or we just rezoning it for whatever comes down the pike?
Oh no, this is, this was at the request of the Raybold um group who is proposing market rate apartments um and some adaptive reuse of the N V F factory. Also, an additional building will be built on the site um for the apartments, so we, yeah, there was a request. Um so it's very similar to the previous rezoning request, um as you stated.
And so my fi- a follow up, um Council President?
Yes, proceed.
Thank you, so uh my question would be the same for this development as well. This will definitely include affordable housing, Matt?
Um as far as my understanding, these are market rate apartments, these will not be affordable.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I shouldn't say they won't be affordable, but I don't think that they fall into that affordable housing category.
Okay, I usually just ask, um so I know where any new development is taking place. Um but I I think again, even though it's not affordable, I think it's a great opportunity um for this particular area as well. Um in the fifth district to um be able to um move uh their their. Economic development area as well. Um I think this is going to open up some opportunity and again, open up opportunity for local jobs, so I think this is wonderful and this is great as well, thank you.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you, Madam President, um uh just basically wanted to um piggyback off of what council um Harley said. That there's going to be some economic development and you hear individuals always talking about various places that. Um, Harley said that there's going to be some economic development and you hear individuals always talking about various places that. Um, the, it's no new apartments or housings aren't being built or any, just type of uh uplifting for the community. So um, this sounds pretty good, such as Sacred Heart. It's going to put some more houses in our develop developments in the areas and bring about economic change. It's always good. So kudos to Councilwoman McCoy.
Um, Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. I just wanted to add that um this uh building is from, uh, just from what Matt had actually read from two thousand and six is when it was purchased. So now here we are in twenty twenty and we're finally getting a chance to have this uh place developed. It has been, you know, unfortunately it's been eyesore, but their plans to try to redevelop it actually had kind of stalled. Uh, years ago when they tried to do it during our housing crisis, they're finally at a place that we can do something with this building. Uh, we did have an issue with um the very front portion of the building. They started to get a little bit more dilapidated and they had to take it down. Uh, with the may certain that it was safe and that happened. It, it really, um, just taking out that portion of it and cleaning everything up. Actually made things look a little less uh damaged over there. So I'm very excited about this program, um, um, this project. And um, I've seen the design and I think that, you know, this will be uh definitely a gem on uh Maryland Avenue and the change of the face. What at Maryland Avenue can look like. So if people are not quite aware, this is actually adjacent to the um, to the Dart building is right off of Beach Street. So Brown Town is on one side and the Dart building is on the other.
I, I have a question either of Matt or of Councilwoman McCoy. Was the tool of a community benefits agreement used on this project since it has such an impact? On the um adjacent residential area?
To, I'm sorry, are you addressing me or Matt?
I'm, well, I asked you, Councilwoman.
Okay. Alright, so thank you. So actually, uh, the tool of the other agreement, I have actually got a chance to speak with a, a council colleague and um, and the union rep. And we have been working on this. Uh, this is something that we want to make certain that our, our community can benefit from. This is actually not a, um, this is more so privately funded, but we still believe because of the, the Raybold Group and how they've actually worked throughout the city. We know that we can actually benefit the people in our area with this building, not just a new building.
So you, so not, so you have not done a community benefits agreement?
Uh, no, we actually have not, uh, it has not been presented uh quite yet. It's still being worked on.
Okay. Councilmember Hart, thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. Thank Councilwoman Harley.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Councilmember McCoy, I think that's great um as it relates to engaging. Um, with the, those that are doing this project. Um, it sounds like you're being um very intentional regarding making sure that the community is going to be um involved. And hopefully, um, there's an opportunity to make sure local hire um is uh being considered is, is the. Well, that's what it sounds like. And, and if that's the case, you know, um, that's great. And, and if that, if I didn't hear you correctly, I'm hoping that that will be an opportunity. Um, and I know we're private projects, um, it can be a little edgy, but um I think that would be a, a great opportunity if, if that can happen. And um, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. I'm not sure if that happens now or later, but I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Because it's adjacent to the fourth district. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments from members of council, are there any comments from the public for this project? We have one person from the public who was to speak, Brandon.
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you please give your full name, please? And in your.
Yeah, yeah, Brandon.
You're, you're, you're muted. If you unmute your phone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So yeah, this is Brandon Witt. I am a property owner in Brown Town, just about maybe two blocks away from this facility. Um, in total support of the project. Um, over the years have seen like Ms. McCoy was saying before, the. One portion of that building having to be taken down because it was leaning onto Maryland Avenue and was a safety hazard. Um, the other building that was taken down next to the Dart uh facility and then they, you know, ended up repaving that and, and making good use of that property. So just uh very excited and hopeful to see this actually get done and um thank you for the council for hopefully moving this forward.
Thank you. I see no other comments from members of the public and none from the members of or anyone against the um, the project. Um, I asked Councilwoman McCoy to move us back into the regular order of business.
Uh, I moved the planning commission, I'm sorry. I moved the council return to the regular order of business.
Okay.
If you move the second of council return to regular order of business, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We now return to the regular order of business. Clerk, could you please read the committee report? You're, you're muted.
Thank you. September second, twenty twenty, President, members of city council, city Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we community development urban planning committee by virtual meeting. Two was referred ordinance number twenty zero thirty seven entitled, in order to rezone the parcels of land located at seven hundred Maryland Avenue, one oh one lower Oak Street. One twenty lower Beach Street from M two general industrial zoning classification to C two secondary business center zoning classification. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council vote on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present, Councilwoman Dixon, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Turner, President Shabobs, absent with leave, Councilwoman Gray.
I knew that the committee report be received, recorded and filed.
Okay.
If we move this second, the committee report be received, recorded and filed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Oh, where we're at, okay. Oh, this is crazy. Um, uh, then the, uh, the port is accepted as, as received, um, first and second, I mean, yes and no. Woo, this is almost over. Uh, clerk, could you please read the findings?
Yes, to the Honorable Honifa Shabas, President of City Council, all honorable members of council from Elizabeth D. Powers, Senior Assistant City Solicitor. Date is September sixteen, twenty twenty, enclosed, please find a copy of the findings prepared in connection with council scheduled public hearing on September seventeen, twenty twenty. Regarding the reference zoning ordinance, the findings. Of the planning commission and its report as well as record of the council's public hearing. And the law department advises their inclusion in record as means of complying with Delaware court decisions that involve zoning ordinances and governments. But the principles of which apply to Wilmington as well. In this instance, the findings support the provisions of the ordinance, the findings and ordinance reflect the recommendations approved by the city planning commission at its regular meeting. Following its public hearing on April twenty first, twenty twenty. At that meeting, the planning commission approved this resolution number nine dash twenty, which recommended is only posed into ordinance to enclose finding support those recommendations. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember.
Um, thank you. I moved the findings, we made part of the record.
Okay.
If we move this second at the finding, we made a part of the record or the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry.
Okay, so, sorry. I'm mute. Okay, uh, Madam President, um, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty zero thirty seven, agenda forty eight, forty seven, in order to rezone the parcels of land located at seven hundred Maryland Avenue, one oh one. Lower Oak Street and one twenty lower Beach Street from M two general industrial zoning classification to C two secondary business center zoning classification.
Madam President, I move that this be known as an acting clause and ordinance and call for a ye or nay vote.
Second. If you probably moved the second, I've been noticed that can cause the orders to call for a question. Councilwoman McCoy, other question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um. See, we are the ordinance, okay, the ordinance is being presented by administration for council review and approval. This ordinance resumes the parcels of land located at seven hundred Maryland Avenue, one hundred and one lower Oak Street and one twenty Beach Street in Wilmington, Delaware. With the zoning classification of M two, which is general industrial to a zoning classification of C two, which is secondary business centers.
Councilmember Adams.
I, yes, Madam President, thank you. Yes, uh, this is actually a pretty exciting night for the uh Republican and business advocate here. It's great to uh see that they're going to actually uh improve this property. I, I'm sure the council lady uh. Uh, McCoy got tired of looking at dilapidated building and then even more tired uh watching a vacant lot there. So uh certainly, uh, again, this is the city moving forward. This is on the south side now, which is another wonderful thing. That we're sort of extending the uh riverfront area underneath the tracks there and a little bit farther out on Beach Street. Uh, again, this is a real good night for the city of Wilmington and I certainly hope everybody gets behind this project. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments from members of council, are there any comments for the public? Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to uh to add finally that I've gotten a chance to uh speak to uh, to the owners of the Raybold Group. I am very pleased with how the, uh, the relationships that actually developed, what he actually sees or envisions for the area. The fact that the community is uh excited to finally see something happen to this building, happen with this building. So um, I just look forward to seeing his uh plan actually come to fruition.
Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Frio.
Yes.
Councilman Adams.
Uh, yes, I'd like to be added as a sponsor to this bill also, uh, and I'm voting yes on it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Shabas.
Yes.
Eleven yays and one absent.
Declare adopted.
Okay. Madam President, I have another, uh, what is it? Yeah, uh, yes, Madam President, I have another ordinance to present and call for a third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty zero thirty eight, agenda forty eight, forty nine, in order to prove the removal of a portion of Anchorage Street located between Lower Oak and Lower Beach Streets from the official city map.
Okay. Madam President, I move that that be known as an acting clause and ordinance and call for a ye or nay vote.
Okay.
Again.
If you properly move the second, I've been noticed that can cause of the ordinance and call for the ye or nay vote on the question.
This ordinance is being presented by administration for council review and approval. This ordinance authorizes the removal of a portion of Anchorage Street between Lower Oak and Beach Street from the official city map.
I see there's no other comments for members of council. Um, are there any comments for the public? Uh, back to council, Councilwoman McCoy.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So just wanted to explain that this uh portion of street is actually directly behind the NBF building. This uh street was primarily used just for that industrial space and now that it is closed, it is, uh, it is not really used, so will not hinder the area at all.
Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Frio.
Yes.
Councilman Adams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Shabas.
Yes.
Eleven yays and one absent.
Declare adopted.
That is all, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Johnson, legislation tonight?
I have no items tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilmember Frio, legislation?
Yes, Madam President, I have one for third and final, one for first and second and two resolutions.
Ordinance twenty zero forty one, agenda forty eight, fifty three, in order to authorize and approve the contract between the city of Wilmington and Teladoc Health Aim for Telehealth Services.
Madam President, I move that be known as an acting clause, the ordinance, a call for ye or nay vote.
Again.
If you properly move the second, I've been noticed an acting clause of the ordinance and call for ye or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Madam President, I believe this is a good service for our, our city employees. Um, we're entering into, uh, we've had a one year contract with them. Now we're going to enter into a three year contract with Teladoc Health. To purchase telehealth services for our city employees. Um, this, this helps them in the fact that instead of going to an emergency room or some twenty four hour. Care facility, they can, uh, they can just uh go down the phone or go through the computer and try to get any questions they have. Uh, answered as far as health with Teladoc, it is a twenty four hour, seven day a week service. There's no copay. The entire family is covered and it has proved to be a savings for the city of Wilmington, uh, and some costs that we incur with emergency room, uh, visits.
See, there's no comments for members of council. Are there any comments for the public? See none, and there is a comment from a member of council. Hold on, let me see what it is. Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, now, I, I, I've read this. Um, so this is just additional healthcare. Is that correct?
This is an additional service to help them get answers when they, when they or one of their family members might have a, a health question.
Right. Right, due to the COVID, this is, we can just call. Okay, I was just double checking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from the public or members of council, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy. Councilwoman McCoy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Frio.
Yes.
Councilman Adams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh. Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Shabas.
Yes.
Eleven yays and one absent.
Declare adopted.
Resolution twenty zero fifty five, agenda forty eight, fifty nine, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Wilmington, the license agreement between the city of Wilmington and municipal corporation of the state of.
Resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by ye or nay vote.
Second.
If you properly move the second resolution, we receive, record or file adopted by ye or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Madam President, this is probably the first of several negotiated agreements. This one is with uh new technology. And uh, it will be the first for installing a network of five G technology. Um, it's a ten year agreement and the cost is about two hundred and seventy dollars per node, which follows the federal guidelines.
Um.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you. I don't know if I just wasn't paying attention during the meeting or what was going on. Um, public right of ways, city of Wilmington. This is not going to be our entryways or anything like that, is it? Where it's going to be noticeable that some god awful looking little facility might be sitting there?
Well, the facility itself sits at the top of the pole.
It sits on top of what?
It sits at the top of the pole.
Okay. So what are you saying? They're not that noticeable or?
Well, I, I mean, I can't answer that directly. I mean, I'm just saying that it's not something that sits on the ground. Or it's not a box right on the sidewalk. It sits at the very top of the pole. I mean, I mean, if you're looking for it, I mean, you're going to see it, yes.
But it's not going to be like Wilmington place to be somebody sitting right next to that.
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's what I meant. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Madam President. If you can ask the, uh, the sponsor, uh, what's the difference between this legislative?
If you can ask the sponsor, what's the difference between this legislation and the other legislation we had about the nodes with the five G?
I don't recall, to be honest with you, because I don't remember the legislation that we had before. And I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, and to answer, answer Councilwoman Walsh's question, you really can't say, I don't think the sponsor can say with all certainty that the right-ofways won't be used, other than nodes that's on the ground at eye level in the future. I don't know if in the resolution, we're suggesting that this is not an ordinance that we're making, making it law, that we request that it possibly doesn't get to nodes. If anybody does a history of five G, five G does have nodes and cells that can be eye-level. They will need those in the future. So unless the resolution or ordinance that we put together states that, they can possibly use these right-ofways for whatever they want.
I guess all I can say to that, Mr. Turner, is that in my discussions with Public Works, as far as this agreement goes, is that the nodes will be placed at the top of the telephone poles. I can't talk about future agreements.
Councilman Turner. I have a, when you finish, Councilman Turner?
No, if I could, I would like to respond to that. There are different, there are different things that you can have with five G, such as node cells, and they do have ground nodes as well. So I understand that we've put a resolution in for the poles of the nodes, but five G needs a lot of technology, and I don't see in this resolution that it stops the technology that can be used for our right-ofways. If we give, if we give a okay to this, then it will open up the floodgates to what Councilwoman Walsh is referring to. And I could be finished.
Well, I just want to share from my understanding or recollection, if I could help out. I think the previous legislation was to create the policies and the regulations that anyone applying for an agreement had to follow so that we would have control over how their installation and operation of the facilities in the city public right-ofways would occur. And so I believe this resolution is just approving this one vendor giving them the authorization to install and operate per our regulations.
May I continue, Madam President?
Councilman Turner.
Yeah, that may be true, but if it's not an ordinance, the resolution doesn't, we don't have enough teeth in the legislation to answer Councilwoman Walsh's concerns. We don't have enough teeth in the legislation to actually regulate what they can do as classifying a node. Like I said, I think that a lot of us need to do a little more research on five G, but there's different things you can use. I mean, using antennas as connection to five G. So I think we need to put a little more teeth in our regulations before they'll be just popping up nodes or supposedly nodes all over our right-ofways.
Okay, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. From what you just said, I inferred that this is the policy that we spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in consultant fees to put together? Is this where those consulting fees were paid?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
The question was, is, I guess, a year and a half, two years ago, I think we budgeted two hundred thousand and came back in and then had a budget amendment for another two hundred and fifty thousand to pay consulting fees to telecommunications consultants to put together the policy with regard to five G. My question is basically, okay, we spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What's the income we're going to receive on this application? And how many more are in line in order to recover that four hundred and fifty thousand? It's already taken a year and a half, two years down the road to get there.
This is the first agreement following up on that, on those policies. The initial cost is two hundred and seventy dollars per node, and that is right now being set by the FCC. But there is a clause in the FCC legislation that states that if our actual costs are more, we can then charge more to recover all our costs. You know, if we want to be a smart city, if we want to be high in technology, we're going to have to start installing this five G technology here in the city of Wilmington, and this is kind of the start of it.
Okay, so we're getting two hundred and seventy dollars of income versus four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in consulting fees?
Mr. Adams, I'm not going to argue with you about the past cost of the consulting fees. I'm just telling you, with this legislation, it's two seventy per node, and it could be more. We just don't know yet.
And my contention is, is gee whiz, we spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to write a manual for two hundred and seventy bucks. We just forgot about the manual and just cut to two hundred and seventy dollars then, right? Would have been put us ahead four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, especially now when we're looking for money. That's, I just wanted to make sure people are correlating the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in consulting fees with two hundred and seventy dollars of contract.
Point of order.
Why is there a point of order?
Wait, excuse me. Thank you, Councilman Adams, for your point of view. Councilwoman Oliver, you had your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. I was going to say that I sat down with Commissioner Williams.
Point of order? We have a point of order on the floor.
I'm dismissing.
Councilwoman Oliver asked for a point of order. Councilwoman Oliver asked for a point of order.
Madam President.
And I called on Councilwoman Oliver.
Madam President.
Yeah, but it's a point of order.
Please, please let me conduct the meeting, sir. Councilwoman Oliver.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I was dismissing my point of order. I wanted to make my comment, please.
Continue.
Thank you. I spoke to Commissioner Kelly Williams, and she showed me some pictures. And this will be, this five G, they will be placed on top of the poles, and they weren't in the right-ofways. I did follow up on this because I'm very interested in this five G and get smart city for the city of Wilmington. So to Councilwoman Walsh's question, they won't be in the right-ofway. They were on top, and they wasn't really bulky. So I did sit down with her, and she showed me some pictures. I did do this last week. So just to, just to reiterate, I did sit down with her, and they weren't bulky, and they were up top. So it wasn't, they weren't in the right-ofways.
And if I can just clarify, the right-ofway they're talking about is because our poles are part of the right-ofway, and it's on the top of the pole. Just for clarity, Councilman, for everyone's understanding, as I referenced, the ordinance that we passed that set the rules and regulations for people to apply for licensing to place their wireless technology on our poles that are in our right-ofway. That's what this resolution is approving, this particular entity's request to install their operating wireless, I'm quite sure, facilities on our right-ofway. I'm quite sure there's going to be many more, which will then be able to help cover some of that consulting costs. And with that, I hope that provides some clarity to understand where we are with this resolution. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman McCoy, your hand is raised, and then Councilwoman Walsh.
Councilwoman. Yes, thank you, Madam President. So my question is based on, it is kind of based on what we had talked about in the past. I remember, I think, a group crowned Plaza or something like that, crowned someone who basically had, came to us and actually wanted to put nodes. And I have seen nodes. We have, I have a node right along Gustav Avenue. I believe that these nodes actually did not come through the city, but more so through the state. The state actually allowed nodes to be placed on their poles rather, instead of the city's poles. So we actually got nodes in the city, even though I think the state allowed it to happen. So the reason why I was bringing this up is because I recall seeing the map on where they would like to see these individual nodes on top of the telephone poles. The nodes are fairly small. You would not really recognize them if you were not really looking for them. But my question was that they're more so, there are a lot of them in our densely populated areas. And I was just trying to find out whether or not that, was that map like, you know, similar to where they wanted to place the most, the nodes? Have we seen the map, or are we just basically going over the contract?
I have not seen the map, and I'm not sure they know exactly where all the nodes will go yet. It, like any kind of internet service, it depends on the frequency and the height and trying to get around obstructions that might exist. I went through this recently, we're trying to change my internet service. No, we do not know where all the nodes are going to be located at this point.
Councilwoman Walsh was next.
Thank you. Number one, I think we've learned a good lesson here tonight. I need to pay more attention at some committee meetings, number one. If you go through the legislation, which I did a lot deeper, since all these questions are now being asked, almost all these answers are in there. It is a pretty, pretty simple device that they're going to be putting together. If anything has to be expanded on that, they have to come back and get a different license for that. So it can't be something big enough and objectionable to anybody, it doesn't appear. So A, I need to pay more attention at committee meetings, and B, I can ask and answer my own questions. That's what I've learned tonight, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have to piggyback off of Councilmember McCoy's comment as it relates to Royal. There was, it seemed like to me, we had a numerous amount of meetings. I recall them sharing with us where these nodes are going to be. And even though I don't want to say that I'm not in support of this, but I really feel that we need to have another, we need to have a meeting to understand more about what's going on with what you're doing because Royal shared with us a diagram of where nodes are going to be placed. And like Councilmember McCoy said, we need to make sure they're going to be placed, and we want to make sure that they're not concentrated in just certain areas. So again, I'm just not comfortable with this being a resolution. Before, it was an ordinance. I have to agree with Councilman Turner as it relates to, I don't think enough teeth is in this and the language, and we don't know enough about it. Why would we be voting on legislation about placing nodes? And we don't even know where or how many. So I would like to make a motion to hold it only because I think we collectively need to, need more information.
This is a resolution for the new Singler Wireless P S L L C. This is not anything to do with Crown.
I know it doesn't have anything to do with Crown.
Public, to understand is a resolution to approve the agreement of New Singler Wireless P S C L L C to install operating wireless communication facilities in the public right-ofway of the city of Wilmington per the following of the regulations of an ordinance that was passed by city council on how that is done.
May I follow up?
I was just giving clarity for those who might not understand what we were actually voting on.
Okay, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so again, the question was asked, how many? And so right now, we're not sure how many of these are going to be placed around the city. So is that, if I'm understanding the question that was asked, they're going to be placing nodes? And I guess what I'm saying is that we have no idea where these nodes or how many nodes are going to be placed. That's my concern. That's.
Councilman Frio, or should, do you want to respond, or should, can I share my understanding?
Well, I mean, my understanding is that there'll be approximately about a hundred nodes throughout the city as part of this agreement. But I could not give you the exact locations yet because, like I said, they're building a network. And there will be certain considerations that take, taken into consideration where they place these nodes.
And they would be placed in accordance to the policy and the regulation per the ordinance that this council passed on the addressing of organizations such as this wanting to place their technology facilities in our public right-ofways. So it's regulated, is what I'm saying, and we approve the regulation.
I get that. I don't, I'm not, you know, confused about that. My question was, where are they going to be? And like I said, as related to Councilmember McCoy, you know, we don't know where they're going to be. I mean, regulations is one part, and I get that, and thanks for the clarity. But where are these poles going to be located? Where are these nodes, what poles are they going to be placing these nodes on? And do we know that?
No, I do not know all the specific locations that will be placed on existing poles, and they will be placed, obviously, throughout the whole city. Every area will receive some so that they have a citywide network.
And that I still understand, I'm sorry, Council President, a follow-up?
Yes.
So I, I'm understanding what we're trying to do.
Madam President, I will hold a resolution to give council members more time to get the information that they want.
Thank you, Councilman Frio.
So noted. Another piece of legislation?
I have another resolution, please.
Resolution twenty zero fifty six, agenda forty eight sixty, where as pursuant to Wilmington Charter Section A two oh five, the city may sell or exchange any real estate belonging to the city.
I move this resolution to be received, recorded, filed, adopted by yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second resolution, may we receive, record, or file, adopted by yea or nay vote on the question?
Yes, Madam President, we're entering into an agreement with Holland Mulch, Inc., to use a piece of city land up by the wastewater treatment plant off of Hay Road. Right now, it's just overgrown land owned by the city. They're going to clean it up, and what they're going to do is be storing mulch there. And as part of the agreement, they will take all of the city's mulch for free. And presently, we're probably paying D S W A about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year to dispose of our mulch, or to take our mulch. So this will be agreed with Holland Mulch to, they'll take care of the land, and they will take all of our mulch. That's the extent of it. Thank you.
Councilmembers, I see hands up, are your hands still up for this resolution? Or because I don't think they went down from the other. Councilwoman Gray.
Madam President, it was for the other madam lowering my hand.
Councilwoman Oliver. Is it for this piece of legislation?
No, ma'am. No, it was for the other, and it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments from members of council, or is there any comments in the public? Seeing no other public, and no more comments from council clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Frio.
Yes.
Councilman Adams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Shabazz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas and one accent.
Declare adopted.
Ordinance twenty zero forty five, agenda forty eight sixty one, in order to authorize the issuance of the city's general obligations bonds and or general obligation by anticipation notes in one or more series on a tax-exempt and or taxable basis in order to provide the funds to finance various capital projects of the city, providing for the sale of the bonds and authorizing other necessary action.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to authorize the issuance of the city's general obligation bonds and or general obligation by anticipation notes in one or more series of a tax-exempt and or taxable basis in order to provide the funds to finance various capital projects of the city, providing for the sale of the bonds and authorizing other necessary action.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Madam President, I move that the first and second reading of that ordinance refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Known as the first and second read of the ordinance refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, legislation tonight?
No legislation this evening, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmember Dixon, legislation tonight?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Councilmember Walsh, legislation?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are we now going to petitions and communications? Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, there've been two things recently that are very disturbing. First, the crime. We've had several shootings in the first district in the past week or so and throughout the city, not just my district. And also the fact that the Delaware F O P have supported Trump and his reelection. That is very disturbing. Um, I've spoken with several police officers and they said that they didn't.
My great, that's, please, we do not talk politics in the business meeting of council.
Okay. Well, I'll talk about the crime. Is that politics? Okay, so I urge people to take care of their own. I've been supporting um, a curfew. If the kids aren't on the street, then maybe they can't get harmed. And even though we're in COVID and there is virtual um, teaching, young men, young women should not be on the street during school hours. And I think it would really help if parents checked on the kids, they took care of home. We have to start in the home. People ask me, what can be done about crime? What can be done about the shootings? When you come to me, usually it's after the fact. So we have to start in the home. Know where your kids are. Try to find something to engage them in. Reach out to community activities. We're going to try to find more activities in the community for young adults and for kids. So I'm just putting a plea out that everyone has to work on this crime matter. It's not just up to city council or the police officers or your neighbors. It has to start with you. And also COVID, please, it hasn't gone away. Please wear your mask, get tested if you think that you have COVID, or if you have been around someone you think has COVID. But be safe. We're going into the flu season, which they warn will increase our possibility of contracting COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, um, uh, that's what I was going to talk about with uh, Councilwoman Gray just spoke about with the crime. Um, it's a lot of activities around here for the youth. And I don't think the parents, you know, um, maybe they don't know about them, or they hadn't followed up. Um, the Reach Warehouse, I was with Kenyatta uh, other day. They have a lot of activities going over there. Some of the youth still in there. Uh, a lot of it is virtual. Um, and it's a lot of it's taking place outside. The Y is still open. Um, I have to agree with Councilwoman Gray. I've been to several shooters in the third district, not the shootings, but to their homes. And a lot of this starts from home. Um, a lot of the parents don't know what the youth are doing. So um, it's, it's more than one thing that's going on with this shooting. Um, the only thing I can say, it's not just here, it's all over the world. You, you see it on TV. It, it doesn't make any sense to me. Um, I think a lot of it has to be, um, deal with education, et cetera. So we need to pray, stay prayed up, and hopefully we can sit down and um, you know, try to come up with uh, some type of solution for some of it. But city council um, cannot do it all, uh, and neither can the police. Uh, I think this thing is just bigger than us. It's um, it's an epidemic and it's, and it's sad. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, thank you. Um, real quick, I got a couple announcements, but I want to piggyback off of the topic of crime. Um, I know it's not a silver bullet. I agree that um, there are um, a number of variables that go into what's going on, but so many people from the community keep asking me, what is city council doing? What, what are our, our elected officials doing? And I believe that our uh, Wilmington Police Department is doing a good job. I believe that the chief is doing what he's supposed to do, but I do believe that it's an opportunity for him to get before the public to say something. So um, in support of the community wanting to know um, an update, um, what, what, what do we feel as elected officials? I think since the administration um, is responsible for executing services around public safety, um, I wanted to just put that out there, um, and it be on the record that I would like to see that. I would like to hear him address the community. And then secondly, I want to make sure our viewing audience that log into our Zoom meetings are aware, depending on what or how they maneuver their devices, can determine if they can see all of council. I'm concerned tonight that Dale only mentioned certain individuals where myself and Councilmember Gray were on before six o'clock, but it didn't sound like he knew we were on. So I wanted it to be on record that we were on the call at six o'clock, but for whatever reason, depending on what kind of device people have, they don't know swipe left or right, um, that you can see who's on. So I just want to make sure that our viewing audience understand what they need to do to make sure they see us at six o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Turner. Okay, I no longer see him on the Zoom, so he must have left the, left the meeting without being excused or, or dropped off, or I don't know exactly what the issue is, but I don't know, we'll see him. So moving on to Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I also want to basically just, uh, you know, chime in on what we've been going through when it comes to the violence uh, as of late. You know, um, it had not, I had not seen so much of it recently, but it has impacted my community greatly just within the past. Um, um, pretty much since the summertime, the um, the middle of summer till now. And um, what I've actually been stating, as uh, I've heard um, Councilwoman Gray states, is that um, I, I do understand that, you know, a lot of this stuff is maybe a little bit beyond our control, but I, as a parent, have been trying to just ask every parent to be a little bit more uh, aware of what's going on. Be, you know, uh, use discernment. If you um, you know, use your instincts. If you feel like something is amiss, please, you know, please make certain that you try to keep your child safe. That's all that I ask. We're not going to lay blame or anything like that. It's just about keeping your individual children safe. I'm like, until we get to a point where we know that we can know where these things be, rather than I, is something that we can legislate or something that's going on with the police or any other type of program that is going on, that we can try to get this thing to be squashed or to calm down. For now, the most that we can do as parents is try to keep our individual children safe. So um, that's what I ask. Um, other thing, I do have an announcement. There is a West Side community cleanup that's happening this Saturday. Uh, you know, we put it together after, you know, the um, after the primary because everything was going on, and no matter, you know, wins or draw, we still needed to get these corridors cleaned up. You know, I've contacted many people trying to make certain that um, uh, Lancaster Avenue stayed uh, clean. And it got to the point where I was just basically trying to get volunteers to go get litter or sometimes pay to get litter up off of Lancaster Avenue. But this is a great opportunity for those who felt as though they've had enough of looking at our corridors look like they do. So on uh, the Saturday, September nineteenth, from ten AM to twelve PM, they're going to initially meet at the Judy Johnson's Park, just to get like bags and gloves and things of that nature. And we're going to be doing both Lancaster Avenue and Second Street. And so we asking all volunteers to come out. I'm going to start sending this uh, this flyer out. This is a uh, collaboration between Senator Lockman, State Rep. uh, Sherry Dorsey Walker, uh, Councilman Turner and myself. Because we're like, enough is enough. We want to make certain that people have understanding that we want to clean this up and try to maintain it. As in, this is our city. We want to try to keep it looking. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnston.
Yes, I, I would like to follow up. Councilwoman McCoy, um, is, um, inviting everyone to come out to the West Side Community Cleanup, um, as I know uh, how much need the area needs um, has in terms of trash, as Judy Johnson Park is in the seventh district. Um, so I certainly appreciate the, the West Side collaboration. Um, in terms of where we're going, uh, we are, um, we will be having a public safety meeting later this month. Um, and the shootings will be discussed. Um, you know, this is a, this is a crisis situation, and there's not going to be an easy way out. As, as everyone knows, um, there's going to have to be some hard choices. And so we're going to discuss some of those options. Uh, we're going to have Chief Tracy sit down at the public safety meeting uh, later this month and talk about what the plan is, um, because we have asked him to have a plan at least, how we can address this. So um, stay tuned. I don't have the, I think the date is the twenty-fourth, uh, the public safety meeting, but I may have it wrong because we have moved it. Um, but please stay tuned, um, for folks at home, please tune into the public safety meeting, and please be there to ask questions. Um, and hold us accountable, hold the police department accountable. So otherwise, everyone just stay safe and masked up. Thank you.
Councilmember Frill.
Madam President, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, what I would just like to say is, uh, you know, we do have to emphasize the individual accountability here. I think everybody spoke to that. And that really means that, hey, government doesn't have the answers to these questions. It's going to be the individuals themselves. I certainly hope the Council President takes a few moments this later on this evening to speak uh, to the CDC report that she had uh, led the charge with a few years ago, that uh, showed some of the um, reasons why these things do go on. And a lot of that had to do with individual responsibility. So uh, I'm going to uh, allow the Council President, who actually uh, did the right thing and thought outside the box to get that report done a few years ago, and perhaps reiterating some of their findings would be very helpful this evening. Uh, thank you, Madam President, for that opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, also just wanted to, to echo um, the comments and supplements from my colleagues already with the, the violence that's happened in the city. Um, and that I, I do agree um, that not only just in our public safety meeting, but that um, there should be in some case, uh, some type of public conference or something that, that um, our police department um, does to make sure that also people feel um, comfortable in the same spaces. I know they're doing that in a few other states as well that are seeing also an increase in violence. Um, but just making sure that uh, people see, um, I think it's important that they see the police um, in a space where they're um, and, and talking in, in person in some capacity. Um, also think that there's a lot of community groups who are trying to wrap their arms around this issue also in the city um, and been doing rallies and different uh, protests around the city regarding a lot of violence that's been happening. Um, and just want to kind of lift up their support um, and help work with them on, you know, giving them the correct funding where to really put um, some folks on the ground, um, who know the insights of what's going on. Um, to have more of that leeway to really help in that capacity. Um, also just wanted to make a couple of quick announcements. Um, the Wilmington Library is having an event uh, with uh, J R Martinez on um, September twenty-fourth at six PM. And it'll be at the Delaware Contemporary, um, and it will also be streamed live on Facebook um, this Saturday. Um, Kingswood Community Center uh, presents their Summer Harvest three point oh, um, which is their community resource fair. Um, that again, it'll be Saturday, um, the nineteenth, from ten to, ten AM to one PM. Um, they'll be giving out fresh produce, uh, food items, clothing and other resources from partners that will be there. And then the last event is a virtual event uh, with Nemours, the Children's Hospital, um, discussing kind of school and a new norm. Um, they'll be answering live question and answers with some of their pediatricians, um, and Nemours with their experts. And that'll be on Tuesday, September twenty-second, um, at six PM to seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just have been receiving quite a few phone calls from charities around town, some small, some big. Um, all of our charities are hurting right now. They're hurting because some people haven't given United Way donations that come out of paychecks because they don't have a paycheck. There's all sorts of reasons why they're hurting. So if you could, please check your cupboards for any type of non-perishable food that you could donate to the food bank. Saint Stevens is a good one. Um, there's a great one over at Hanover Church. Um, right off of uh, Baynard Boulevard, Eighteenth and Baynard, and also um, Saint Patrick's. Uh, their community center, they have an open pantry every day also. And Saint Patrick's really does amongst the poorest of our poor. Um, the only thing I would like to say, and, and please, if you've only sent a check around the holidays, around Thanksgiving or Christmas for a lot of these charities, please try and dig in and send your check now. They need the money now. If they're to continue their services, this is when they need it. Um, and God knows how long. Uh, everything that's going on in this country is going to last. The only other thing I want to say is, I, I believe the public safety meeting is on Monday, on the twenty-first. Um, as you've tried to teach us for the last three and a half years, Madam President, if you want a piece of legislation, sit down with a staff member and work on it and get it done. The committee will speak to it. A curfew, we already have a curfew for kids on books. If you want a daytime curfew, I'm not going to sit down and investigate it because there's too many things involved with it right now. That, who picks up the children? The police? Does the police pick them up? Where do they take them? Home? If nobody's home, where do they take them then? That again, we would put a job on our police officers. It's not part of their job, shouldn't be part of their job, yet becomes part of their job, and then people wonder where the cops are. So I understand the dilemma. I think in cases like this, with everything going on, where are the school boards here? Where are the school districts? They should step up a little bit and start taking some um, responsibility for the lack of teaching that's going on with their children because they're just not properly supervised. So we just can't solve all the problems. That's the bottom line with our city, even though we'd all like to have a magic wand and be able to do it. Um, and that's all I have this morning. Thank you for this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. And the public safety meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-second.
Twenty-second? Okay, thanks.
And you know, I, I, I understand and agree and feel, feel the pain that all my members of council, as well as the community feels about what's happening with our children. Um, that as just the CDC did come and investigated, and there's been findings, and there's a lot of work being done based on those recommendations that we put together uh, to address the findings um, from the CDC investigation. We have community intervention teams, which is made up of individuals from the, from um, the communities who try to engage with the young people, try to intervene with them, um, and to stop whatever their beef might be, or to, to, to probably avoid some violent issues taking place. Uh, we created safe havens for our children, so, so for our children have safe places to go with our community centers on weekends and, and, and open at night. Uh, we try to find adults that they could feel comfortable to confide in when they're um, having issues or need help or resources. There are social workers in the libraries, um, and in, in our schools and in the, in, in the community centers to help um, families, um, and be very close to the community of families to provide them with support services. Um, we work it hard to, in touch, to engage um, and provide resources to some of the really grassroots organizations that are doing really yeoman's work and, and touching because they, they're using more um, um, respected and trusting, the community is more trusting to talk to them. And um, then there's also the need of some public in, um, intelligence. I mean, our community has to know some things that are happening, and I know we have a strong no snitch kind of po, of policy within the neighborhood, but we're getting to the point now where if maybe they don't want to talk to police, maybe we need to engage our faith-based organizations. They become who we can go and rely and say that we know there's a, there's a person in trouble. Um, and that they're, 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 um, having this beef with someone, um, and they, or they carrying a gun. Whereas we have to be able to share the intelligence that's happened in the community for us to be able to address it. There's no one way, no solution to this, but I think everybody has some idea what could be done. And if we work together to have a comprehensive plan that's very diverse, um, and uh, attach the resources to it, we will hopefully be able to address that. But there's one issue that I wanted to share that I think um, there were, um, that, that we need to also be conscious of. Um, there was an article in the paper about a, a, a. Um, there was an article in the paper about a a gentleman who lived in Bear, who was arrested and charged with just illegally disarming a firearm. Um, and he was picked up through, I believe, the use of fire for um shots fired. Uh, and they 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 caught him and he. It, you know, just saw discharged his firearm in the neighborhood. Um, and we know that there's a lot of bias, civil unrest, racial discrimination that going across the country. And so we have to be conscious when we see people outside of our neighborhoods into our neighborhoods. You see a stranger that does not fit in our neighborhood. Um, and that's what the case of this person was. He was a Caucasian man. Um, and he was in the neighborhood and he fired a gun. And we're saying, is is they are, is anyone firing guns? I'm not accusing anyone of shooting our children, but I'm just concerned that that's possibility that we need. So we must all be vigilant and watching who's coming in our neighborhood. Um, and um who's driving through our neighborhood to make sure that such types of vigilante of things are not happening. Um, and but that's, but that was that that we police report really, really troubled me that someone from Bear was in the city. And his gun was legal. His gun was legal. Um, but that kind of incidents are happening. Maybe one of those stray bullets might have accidentally hit a innocent bystander. Um, I also want to share that one of the things we know we're doing is is resources, that today the city of Wilmington announces partnership with the Wilmington Alliance and the Pete DuPont Freedom Foundation. For joining the National League of Cities in a city innovation program. And this program asks city leaders across the country to make a commitment for one year to create the right policies, programs and practices to ensure that our communities can thrive in the global innovation-driven economy. Um, for the first year in this national program, we have selected to focus on strengthening our communities and building equity by working with local entrepreneurs. To provide them with the resources to start and grow their business. And as part of this cohort of cities, we will have access to national funding and training opportunities to build and support our local business with a special focus. To the to those in entrepreneurs in the brown and black communities, uh, which is a large portion of our population. So I I've been working along with the National League of Cities as well as a couple of other members of council for many years. And I'm proud that we're moving Wilmington onto this national stage as a leader in equity and entrepreneurship. Um, so this is the, this is another innovative initiative that we're trying to do to deal with the COVID, the high unemployment, the loss of jobs. Is building our entrepreneurs right in our neighborhoods. So I'm really excited that we are taking this challenge on. Um, and we will be, we will be held accountable and provided the national funding and resources to help build small businesses. Businesses with a special focus again in our brown and black community. So please pay attention to uh more information. I will be commenting about how we'll be able to help our businesses like to do that. So with that, um. Um, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Okay. All those in favor, I say an aye?
Aye.
A motion, care, media adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good night. Bye.
Good everyone.